First on the agendas. The approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda of the September 18, 2018 regular meeting as presented.
Motion second, Congress and I. Opposed. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion second, Congress and I. Opposed. Question carries. Next, we have public participation. We'll move on to the report with Superintendent Dr. Flain.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good evening. In your packet, I will point out, I'm gonna kind of move through some of these because we have other people doing some of the pieces. I will point out in your packet that we do have some safety reports from this month, this past month. We've done fire, earthquake, a fire, earthquake drill, and a tornado drill. The St. Genevieve High School Hall of Fame induction ceremony will take place on Friday, October 5th. Our inductees this year are Herbert C. Follett from the class of 1954. Mr. Follett was a Missouri House of Representative from 1983 to 1994. He is an area business owner, civic leader, and has a leading role in promoting tourism in downtown St. Genevieve and Missouri. Our second inductee is Rick Boyer, class of 1964. He is a professional musician, performed in tours in bands like the Mandrell Sisters, Eddie Rabbit, and Bill Swan. He performed and recorded with many legends of country music, including George Jones, Ben Skil, Willie Nelson, and many others. Both Mr. Follett and Mr. Boyer will be in attendance on October 5th. I think they're slated to arrive in the high school commons at 9:00 a.m. With a lunch here on campus and throughout the day, they will be addressing the students and meeting with students and taking tours. And then the official induction ceremony will be at 5:30 in the Performing Arts Center. So the community is invited and we would love to see as many people there as we can. Does anyone have any questions on that ceremony? Okay. I'm then going to turn it over to Mrs. Tooms. She's going to do a technology update for us.
Evening, everyone. All right, so our mission in the tech department is to provide technology to create success at St. Genevieve. And we have several goals that we try to maintain year after year. Our main goal is if your infrastructure doesn't work, then you can't add anything technology-related that actually works. So we strive hard to make sure the infrastructure is in place, we provide the tools and resources necessary, provide communication tools, professional development, and we try to keep them within our budget as allowed with our purchases. So our backbone is we maintain all the switches, wireless and wiring in the district, and we add whatever we need to, when we need to, where we need to. Our bandwidth comes through the Big River Telephone System. They use Charter Spectrum. That's a change from in the past, we were on ATT and now we're at Charter. Our climate filtering is Cepha Filter and GoGuardian. And GoGuardian gives the teachers the ability to keep track of what the students are doing on the Chromebooks a little more than just our regular filter. We try to maintain a safe environment for our students and we have to do that to keep in compliance with our E-Rate funding. We also have door and car readers and video surveillance that we keep in line. We also have an off-site backup system for all of our critical systems. The teachers in both elementaries this year received new laptops and they will be getting projectors as time allows throughout those two buildings. Excuse me. We did receive new Chromebooks this year, K5 through 12, and we were able to repurpose all the good ones down to K4. We appreciate the board for the support for that. We also have the Google Nexus tablets in K1. And we do have projection devices in every room and any place that we feel that we need more, so we add those as we go along. We also maintain many softwares here in the district. We are a member of Google. We have Google Classroom, Moodle, any other learning management system that teachers want to use. We don't really specialize on one of those. Whatever they feel comfortable with using. We also help maintain and support the video broadcasting class. The Library Media Center, and if she needs help in there, we go ahead and support any of that. And if she needs any additional hardware or software that enhances the learning process, we try and accommodate that as well. We also maintain the web set system, Destiny, which is in the library, Overdrive, which is the online books that you can read on the Chromebooks. Again, we're a member of Google Apps for Education. We have United Streaming Discovery Education System. And this SmartMontage we house here, which is our online video services here in the With our goal three, our communication tools, we provide email for our teachers and students. We also get the Google Classroom. That's a collaboration software that the teachers can use with the students. We have shared documents, spreadsheets, and presentations. And then we have our webpages. Switched to a new system this year through Aftegi. And it incorporates a website, our social media accounts, our new school app, which allows us to have push notifications, a calling system, and a texting system, all rolled into one. We also have maintained PowerSchool. I believe this is our 12th year on PowerSchool. We use that to keep in touch with our parents, with grades, and with any fees that they may have. We also did an online collection system this year to enroll. And we worked through some bugs there and we'll keep building onto that as we go along. We also have announcements on TVs in all of the schools. We keep WebLink in line, which is our online check stub system for the staff. And we have file down for district files and some other information that we also need throughout the year. We have the SNAP program, which the nurses use. Of course, they have some accounting software for all things financial, an inventory system. We track all of the Chromebooks and the teacher computers through that. We have a system called Casia where we push out things to our Windows computers, like software updates, antivirus, and it's also our workforce system. We also have an alumni and sports reference system that you may have seen down in the And then our fourth goal is to provide some PD. And this year, we rounded up an events session last year. And we started a new Coolheart this year. It focuses on hands-on instruction with integration of technology. And our teachers are able to receive up to $12 of college credit through Missouri Baptist. We also usually run a webcam in the summer. This past summer, we ran one on Hyperdocks, which is a new and upcoming fabulous thing that teachers are learning how to use. And we usually try to cover a hot topic and this year, of course, was Hyperdocks. And they did receive college credit for that as well. And we have a tech budget that with the people of St. Genevieve County and our wonderful administration and our board lets us do the things that we do. And we try to keep it within our means. And we hate to say no to any teacher request, so if we can provide it, we do. And then we also try to look to the future for what's next and have to stay on budget with it. So we appreciate everything that you let us do with our budget. Do you have any questions somewhere about what we do?
I can imagine all the things that I just saw. How do you keep up with all that?
Oh, we just...
It's amazing. You're good. I especially like the webcam for the games now and things.
Let's get that.
You can watch where we're going.
Mr. Schweiss and his group are like taking that on to a very fine job with doing that online broadcast.
Yeah, that's great.
I just watched it last Friday night. It was right.
Nancy, with the new website, the new look and everything, navigating is different. Is there, I mean, some things that some people said it's hard to find things, they're not used to, is there any changes or is it gonna, we're gonna...
Oh, no, we're gonna evolve that as we go. It is a totally different platform. We don't have things quite the way we want them. We're trying to drive the parents to the schools that they want to, that they need to go to instead of just relying on everything at the district level. We'd like to see them go more towards the schools so they can see the news and the live updates and the live feeds that they're putting out through the schools. So it'll be growing and changing as the year goes on. So we're still working with that.
Well, we just want you to know how we appreciate you and what an amazing person you are too.
Oh, thank you all. And my crew, yes. Can't do anything without them. They're wonderful.
Just to let you know. We appreciate everything you have to do.
I've had some feedback on the website too, that it's just not as easy to find things either, so I don't know if there's something we could do. But I can't, I'll be honest, I can't find anything either. And I haven't checked in a while because I have a football schedule now, but usually I go out and I try to put schedules in my phone from the website. And have those been updated on a calendar somewhere?
Yes, Mr. Nix has been updating those on a calendar. You'll probably have to go to the high school to find it. We're trying to send people to the school that it associates with, so check the high school.
Coming from a parent's perspective, I had to jump in and try to figure it out as well. And if you just go to the main page and click on Explore, you're exploring the district level. If you go in and choose the school, it takes you to the school, and then you hit Explore, and then it pulls up the school's options.
It had no idea that way.
That's exactly right. And that changes what's throwing people off.
I explored, I went everywhere. I'm done. People ask me, "I can't even find the menu, Gary."
But I think some of the people who are looking for sporting events may have children in the elementary, so they're not gonna click on the high school to look at things.
Right, that's kind of what we're setting with that, that you just want high school stuff, it's in the high school. You want elementary, you go to that elementary school. It's just different. It'll get easier as you...
Yeah, I mean, every time I go, there's more content sometimes.
Well, I appreciate the principals sending us. That would have to.
And the key with the website is when you go to a school, whatever page you're on, the explore key is what you're looking for.
Explore.
The explore button. Yeah, and then everything pops up.
Hopefully.
Or hopefully. Or we're working on it, but that's where it's supposed to be.
Please.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. And I just want to share Nancy and Jason and Brandon and their summer crew, they do an amazing job in that limited amount of time, so what they do is impressive. And they know how much we appreciate it, yes.
Thank you very much.
I believe next, we have Dr. Taylor. He's gonna talk about her PD day on August 31st.
Our PD days were both in August this year. Usually, we have one in early August and one in September. I've scheduled a meeting with the Professional Development Committee to review the surveys that we sent out from August 10th and August 31st. I've reviewed it myself, and I feel like the lunch on August 31st was a highlight. We wanted to try something different this year, and since Jordan Mueller is new and comes highly recommended, we had her prepare muscacholi for lunch with green beans and olive salad. And I just told her some dessert, but she came up with, I don't know what those things were, but they were fantastic.
Cobbler.
Cobbler, three different flavors of cobbler. So we have fantastic feedback on that. There was good feedback on several of the sessions. We tried to offer five sessions, five breakout sessions to choose from for each one. And then, of course, we had Alice training and some MANT training thrown in there. Overall, I feel like it was a good experience. There's always things we can do, options we can offer that are going to allow our teachers to improve their craft, and we're gonna continue to search for those things, so.
Okay. And I believe we're at the highlight of the superintendent report. And that would be the building principals. Who's gonna go first?
I'm gonna go first tonight. Hi, everybody. I'm gonna wear a couple of hats tonight. I'm gonna combine Bloom Sales report with our report, and we'll go a little bit back and forth maybe. So Mrs. Zussman sent her regards, but she couldn't make it, so I'm gonna share for both of us. So we're gonna begin with this Bloom Sales slide. She really wanted to highlight two key pieces on this that the beginning of the school year kicked off pretty great for them, and they had a large kindergarten class, and her staff did a really great job with all hands on deck. They went out and greeted kids at the buses on the first day, not just kindergarten, but a lot of teachers greeted all the children. But a lot of extra helping hands rallied and helped kindergarten for many days. And I have to say, that's true for our building too. There's all hands on deck for lunch for quite a while, especially, maybe some other areas, but mostly lunch. Lots of milk opening and ketchup opening. And we were somewhere, Lori and I were somewhere, and they had little squirt ketchup bottles, and we're like, "Oh, my God, why didn't we ever think about that?" So we're gonna talk to Mrs. Mueller, and maybe we won't have some ketchup packets to open in the future. But anyway, so she just wanted to share that they had a pretty good kick off. And again, leadership, both her staff and my staff did, on August 31st, did our leader and me lining up academics training. So we both developed an action team in our buildings, and our teachers are beginning their leadership binders, where the students will be setting goals, and wildly important goals. And it'll have a section about themselves, their goals, and their progress in that. So that's underway right now in both buildings. These are just a few pictures she wanted to include, of fun stuff going on. The picture in the bottom, I don't think that's her new student breakfast. I think that's on another slide. But just all the programs and things going on around the building and the greeting of children on the first days. She had a new student breakfast in Suri in our building, so we'll kind of talk collectively about that. Mrs. Rowland had a new student breakfast, and I think Dr. Taylor joined, didn't you? Yeah, and they did a team builder, and just was really a good, a good thing. We've always done new student breakfast, but we're expanding it a little bit, and they had a good time that day. Both her building and my building did these trainings together, which is nice. So you'll see the pictures in the high school cafeteria. Thanks, Mr. Haney, for always letting us use that. And the technology department does a great job setting it all up for us. And so we had our big, large training with our leader and me, Covey, folks. And then Mrs. Keeker and Mrs. Foff, or Ms. Foff, have done an amazing job getting our K3 teachers trained up for all the dyslexia updates. Actually, kindergarten is only October 30th, but 1st through 3rd. There's many new assessments they have to give, especially in first grade. They have seven alone in first grade. So the teachers needed a lot of PD on that to learn the background of it, be ready to give the assessments, be ready to analyze the assessments and figure out, well, what do we do if we see any red flags? So Mrs. Keeker and Ms. Lynette Foff put in endless hours planning and then training the teachers. Here's a few more pictures of Lori's building. She said her preschool pumpkin patch was a big hit. Big shout out to Mr. Kenny Rapp. He helped with that quite a bit. And you can see in the bottom right, or far right picture, they really grew huge pumpkins. So it was really a lot of fun and a tradition they're gonna keep going. And Mrs. Kreitler in our building has a pumpkin patch as well. But I don't have any pictures of pumpkins yet, so I don't know how sorts of... Ours may not be. We'll talk about that in October, okay? And then here is our building. You know, that's an old picture, but I just couldn't take it out because it's one of my very favorite pictures. It's a picture from Mrs. Beckerman's first grade class, and it just sums up the sum of the whole and how I think many of our teachers feel our children are one collective awesome entity. So that's a great picture I just couldn't bear to let go of yet. And then I want to kind of give a shout out to Joyce, Joe Gerst, and Stephanie Dury in our office. So they had an idea, Timbukka chalk wall, and changed it up. So this is already our September message, so I'll put our chalk wall on each month. So, because Mrs. Dury loves to draw that up. That's her therapy after a tough day. So a few pictures of learning leadership. I mean, we have hundreds to choose from, so I just picked a couple that I thought captured what our big rocks are this year. So the picture up in the front, up at the top, you'll see two big things that we have a lot of going on, and that's technology. Thanks to you guys and Mrs. Tooms, we have one-to-one in our buildings, and it is very rare to not walk down a hallway and see kids everywhere, all over the room, learning around the room on their Chromebooks and together with partners independently. And then alternative seating. You know, they're not sitting at little desks anymore all the time. They're all over the room in all sort of alternative settings. So you'll see quite a bit of that in our building. In the bottom picture, you see a lot of team building. The teachers spend the first few weeks of school building a family. They spend a lot of time with their students in small group things, doing team builders and getting to know you things and laying the foundation for a great year. So lots of good team building went on our first weeks, and there's a group of kids, they had to stack the cups and get it all just right. And it was a science lesson as well. All right, so we had a T-shirt this year in our building, not follow a leader, but be a leader. So there's a picture of our staff in our new be a leader shirts, which I think sums it up. And then we, everybody by and large wore their Lindsay shirt, or stripes, or chevron to remember Mrs. Lindsay Roth. So there's a picture of our kindergarten team in their Lindsay shirts. We have positive office referrals this year so far. We've had six already, and one of them is even extra special. She was also nominated for Doing the Right Thing. So Mackenzie Knight, up in the upper-left corner, is also going to be celebrated on September 24th up in St. Louis at the Doing the Right Thing event. She helped a classmate who was choking in the cafeteria. She quickly, she paid attention, she noticed that something wasn't right, and she immediately got a teacher. I mean, just got a teacher and got help fast. And it was a scary moment, but it all was okay. Mrs. Thompson was on duty. We met Mrs. Thompson tonight, and she was just about to do the Heimlich, and Mackenzie coughed, up-coughed, and she was okay, but it was a little scary. So Mrs. Vade nominated for Mackenzie for Doing the Right Thing. So we'll hear more about that in October after her event. And then also, we have Nate Womack, Jayden Minor, Brady Marshall, Millie Huffman, who is also the Twitter fairy, and Leah Capps, all received positive office referrals for going above and beyond in some sort of behavior or kind way. And so Millie was bestowing the golden hashtag that day. So I didn't use her PowerSchool picture, I grabbed that one. All right, and we had a great grandparents week last week on, for third grades, on September 10 through 13. We had 121 grandparents come. So that's a lot of grandparents. And we had a great day, and we leaderized it. The students took care of refreshments, decorated the tables, greeted in the lobby, helped with photos, took grandparents on building tours, and all in all, really a great day. And the cafeteria staff provided some really awesome meals that the grandparents loved. And there, on the day of our new student breakfast, you can see we had a lot of new students. I meant to get the number. Mrs. Gag, do you remember, it was 50-plus? Yeah, lots of new kids this year to St. Genevieve Elementary. And so we had a student breakfast, Mrs. Grebinger. We had donuts and milk and visited with them, and they got to sit in groups and tell a little bit about themselves. And also, there are new faculty that you met tonight. I threw those folks into. Mrs. Silver couldn't be here tonight, but you were able to meet the others. And there you go.
Good job.
Thank you.
It's amazing to me, now that I've changed positions, how much behind-the-scenes work there is in order to make the first few days of school successful. And I'm very fortunate because I had a whole team of people that did that for me while I stood back and watched, because these guys really knew what they were doing. In the first few weeks of school, we had an awful lot going on, launching into lead groups already and tutoring, and of course, we had new student breakfast as well, and open house, and all of these things that we do sort of as team builders to make sure that we're all jiving together, but also to make sure that the students are ready to go and that they feel welcome to. The pictures that you see here on the left, this is with our new shirt this year, there are about three different versions of that picture. I think that was taken on a Friday afternoon, and we took different iterations of it depending on who showed up and when they left. So that's the one that includes the most of us. On the right is something really neat that happens on Friday mornings. Before we send the kids off to their classes, after they've been hanging out in the gym, you know, getting off the buses or coming in from the cars or walking in, they go to the gym. Before we send them off, we have a group of girls stand up and lead us through a few cheers and chants, and then we all sing the school song before we start the school day on Friday morning. So I thought that was something nice that I wanted to share with you. We have kind of jumped on the bandwagon and are really focusing on how much we communicate outwards. Every bragging point, we like to tweet it. We like to put it in the live feed. We like to put it in our news. And so what I've done for you here is just captured some of the tweets that have gone out. And the one that popped up there in color is just random, but I think it's also a good example of the kinds of things that we like to share. This is a young man just working on uniform in class, and his teacher felt that was cool and wanted to share it. Over there on the right are some of the hashtags and handles that we use. And I can say that it seems like every week, we see a little bit more, and a little bit more, and a little bit more, which makes me really happy because I know we have so much to brag about. We do, I've already had some positive office referrals, six so far, for various reasons, but there's a common theme here. All six of these guys gave up time that they didn't have to in order to help out the office in one way or another. Maybe they were passing through registration and we needed a job done, or maybe they were just waiting for their parents to get off work and we needed a job done. And these guys jumped in, volunteered, went above and beyond, and we really appreciate that kind of helpful attitude that not only they have, but so many of our students have. But these guys in particular, they received positive office referrals, so we want to give a shout out to them. Also, a shout out to Mrs. Stoll. She is what you might commonly refer to as the female teacher. We call it the Spotlight Award because we have kind of a rock star theme in our motivation. And you can see some of the nice things that folks have said there. I'll get out of the way so everyone can see. Miss Stoll is our first Spotlight Award winner. Congratulations. Well deserved. And these are just a few of the comments we had. We had multiple nominations on Miss Stoll, all of which talked about dedication and going above and beyond and helping in multiple areas. So, good job. Also, we had NJHS induction just over the weekend. Fifty-one inductees added to the 20-something returning members. We're up to 77 kids now, which is absolutely amazing. At that same induction ceremony, Mrs. Huffman was named the Staff Member of Honor, and Mrs. Hoben-Miller was named the Teacher of Honor. So we want to congratulate those students, but also those teachers as well, and Mrs. Stoll and Mrs. Pelican for putting together such a lovely ceremony. It really was a great, great evening and a good time to recognize what we really should be about, anyway. So that was wonderful, and I thank them for that. Thank you.
We, like everybody else, we started the school year, really jumped right into it. And it's funny sometimes because so much happens, and the staff and the students are an amazing job, that it almost feels like you start in routine. But it also almost feels like you start flat because you're just going. And this was a picture I took from the floor. You know, I'm one of those people that I get the privilege to go down there for our first Friday running of the halls. And when we got in there, it was just electric and powerful. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about cheerleaders here in a minute, but the number of girls that we have in the group, John, I'm drawing a total blank.
Color guard.
Color guard, thank you very much. And our color guard, in our... And our color guard, and our cheerleaders, and our emeralds this year, and the job that those organizations are doing is just absolutely phenomenal. So I grabbed this, some of you may recognize this if you're getting our daily announcements emailed to you. This is the background photo from that. I decided to go and include that for a while. Catch you up over the summer a little bit. We had the NCAA All-American nominations. We had NCAA in to do a camp for our cheerleaders, and it went unbelievably well. We had several nominations, as you can see there, and I'm also pleased to say those two ladies that are pictured, Carissa Holtz and Tristan Orini, are both NCAA All-American. They were selected. So it's a phenomenal award, and the job that Katie Diamond and Shelley Dallas have done with this squad, both in size and chemistry and in performance and technique are absolutely amazing. So if you see that at the football game, be sure to compliment them if you see them there. I wouldn't be without student success, and I wanted to go and feature these two, not because I was looking for a few bonus points from my fellow associate, Dr. Mercer, but these are our Rotary and Elk Student of the Month. And I really, what impressed me about them, first of all Clayton, I was glad to see that we were able to announce this. Thirty-six on the ACT, no perfect score, you know, I mean, I know, exactly. A lot of us think about, dream about, imagine what that would have been like. He has actually done it. But here's the other piece that I just think is so insanely impressive about this class. When you talk about character and they're, they're so different, there's so much personality between these two individuals. Thirty-two. We've had classes where we can't get a thirty on our ACT, and our first two Students of the Month are out of the gate at a thirty-two and a thirty-six. Absolutely amazing. And the other thing that I want to say about them, and I'm not just saying it because he's sitting in the room, but I say it all the time about our students at SGHS, we have great kids because we have great parents, and these two definitely embody that. So I wanted you to be able to see them and congratulate them if you get a chance to see them out and about, but it really was, again, a great start to our year with them. Along the lines, I wanted to do a preview because I know this is always a big deal. A few people follow this. We have a little event coming up called Homecoming. Our theme this year is game shows, and basically, those will be what floats will be about freshmen will be why about sophomores will be deal or no deal, juniors will be Family Feud, and seniors will be Wheel of Fortune. Our spirit day is the big thing for y'all to remember on Friday. Well, actually, on Wednesday, we have the Spirit Rally at seven o'clock and the often heralded competitive, sometimes too much, powder puff football game at eight. And then on Friday, we will have, of course, the parade at five, the Band Booster Chili Supper between four and six-thirty, so you don't even have to leave campus that day. It is the one time that week I actually get to have dinner with my lovely wife. We will have reunion for classes of 1968, which I believe was mentioned earlier, and 78 and 93 from 5:30 to 7:00 in the Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium, and then, of course, the football game with coronation at halftime. And then on Saturday, for those of you who really want to see something interesting, we have the dance. So if you'd like to show up, please feel free, come. It is an amazing event. And we also will have the Praying, Rain Makeup Day at 10 o'clock on that day. I bring that up because the last time, the time before last, we're kind of going on in every other, that we had a new superintendent was the first time in a long time that we had to go on, so I'm just saying, you know.
Should be fun.
If that happens, you're in very good comfort. Let me just leave it at that. So that's our upcoming homecoming, so everybody's heard the calendars, excuse me, seen it and is aware. I want to talk about something called reclassified data. You know, we've been doing Dragonfire for a while, and one of the things I'm so proud of my staff about, I mean, I just cannot stop talking about this data and what they did and what, how they started this year. We don't do positive office referrals, but one of the things that our staff does do is they have the grade level teams and grade level meetings, and on Dragonfire dates, they'll call students and talk to them. And sometimes they'll call them and talk to them about, hey, this is what we need to do, this is what we need to improve. And sometimes they'll call them and talk to them, just to give them a shot in the arm and say, great job. Because to me, when that group of staff takes time out of their day to sit in a room with a student and just boast on it, it works wonders. And kind of an example of how this is all progressing, what you see up there is our ninth, 10th, and 11th grade reclassified data from previous year, okay? Fourteen, fourteen, and eight, meaning fourteen freshmen did not earn enough credits to become a sophomore. Fourteen sophomores did not earn enough credit that year to become a junior, and eight juniors did not earn enough credit to become seniors. What you see there in the four, three, and six was last year. Only four freshmen, only three sophomores, and only six juniors. And the thing about the upperclassmen that are so impressive is you have to remember, once they get reclassified as a freshman, it's very likely, because we still consider them on track, we still say you can get there, it's very likely that they're reclassified throughout every year, because they will always be that one year behind, so they'll fill in as. So you can really see the difference in those numbers and the difference in what my staff has been able to accomplish in working with students and putting them students first. And just, and what I really like is as we've gone through this process, just the new ideas that are starting to come from it, and some things that are already being proposed that we could work with advisory to really start working with students, especially those seniors to make sure we can keep every kid on track for graduation. It's very impressive, and so I wanted to boast on my staff and the start that they did and all the hard work that they've put into it, because truly without them, that doesn't happen. And you can see that everybody combined last year was still not what our freshmen and sophomores had been. So just incredibly impressive for them, great job for them thinking outside the box and making it happen. And the last one, and I know I took up a lot of her time tonight that I owe her for now, because she could have been out of here 25 minutes ago, but you guys as a board know that from somewhere around November, December on, every month just about, I get to include amazing things that our FCC LA does in my board report. But unfortunately, I don't think she ever gets to hear Dr. Etherington, those things that I say about her and her program and the leadership skills that those kids are bringing into that and that they're being taught, and all the great projects that they're doing, the leadership they demonstrate for our school, the excellent programs that they're putting on for our school, from assemblies to guest speakers coming in, and just all that work and what they, how they represent us, not only our community, but neighboring communities when they visit and do competitions in other schools, and down in state, and the officers, and just, you know I can go on and on because you hear it just about every month, but I wanted her to have to hear it and know that that's the way we view our FCC LA program and the wonderful job Dr. Etherington does with our fax program. So I asked her, made her, I should say, and the students stay for this part, because they are here tonight, because they would like, I think, an opportunity to thank you for what you've been able to do in the National Leadership Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. So if you would, please.
Thanks. Please. We're gonna take care of it because they're well trained and ready to go.
Hi, my name is Emily Abt. I am a regional officer for FCC LA. And going to the National Leadership Conference as an officer was a great opportunity because I got to meet other regional officers and bounce ideas off of each other and meet people from Alaska and attend all these different workshops about stuff I could do to get more involved in the CCL and help our memberships. Just want to thank you guys for allowing us to do that.
Hi, my name's Haley Rogers, and I really thank you so much for supporting us and going to Atlanta. It was so much fun. I had a couple of favorite things. One, it was, we had these pens that we could trade, and it was like of our state, and we just got like so many different pens from so many different people, and being able to meet so many different people and having that opportunity was really amazing. And we also got like a lot of public speaking experience, so it's really fun.
Hi, I'm Lexi Bava, and I just want to say thank you for supporting us in this because it's a really amazing opportunity. We get to meet a lot of people from all around the country really, and compare schools, compare organizations, and it really shows how lucky we are to be in this district especially. And we get, like we said, a lot of workshops and experiences and learning, and it really is an amazing opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Well.
Doctor, I think we just wanted you to know, we hear about you all the time, you and the students, and then when we have students that go out and do stuff within the community or even talk to us, it's amazing. We're so happy that we are able to do this, like the two girls are a great product.
And they represent our school.
Yeah, absolutely. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And that, from all of us, that concludes our principals' reports. Thank you.
Nice to talk about Mrs. Stoll, Miss Stoll, Mrs. Stoll. She is an amazing person, not only in school, at work too, at the O. We love you Erin. Okay.
That concludes my report.
Then we'll move on to the unfinished business, and first is the emergency procedures.
Dr. Field, junior.
Well, I'm, this is pretty simple for me, because whoever did it before me did a fantastic job. So really, the updates that I made are personnel. There were some minor wording changes on about 10 different pages. I updated student numbers, staff numbers, and then there was some admin shuffling. Along with the admin shuffling comes responsibilities when there is an emergency, and so we talked through that and assigned people where we thought they would best fit. The first 15 pages just explains the plan, gives you a general overview of terminology, and then the remaining 108 pages walks you through what we're going to do when certain things happen. Let me see if I can find. Everything from bomb threat, civil disturbances, fire, hazardous materials, hostage, intruder, severe weather, tornado, traumatic injury, there are sections for each ones of one of those things, and talks about how we're going to handle it as a district. That covers the 123-page document, and then behind that, we have the individual building plans. I think those are separate documents in the packaging of the classroom, but each building is, then goes through how they're going to handle emergency situations. And their plan is actually uploaded into the Quick Access app, which everyone has on their phones, and then we're able to access that information wherever we need it, whenever we need it. So the Quick Access app is really handy. In an emergency situation, it's going to be invaluable to have that information at the touch of a finger. They are going through some changes. Hopefully, it'll be a little easier. Right now, we have to send updates to them. They're trying to make it more manageable for us so that we can update it as, as we need to, you know, if somebody gets moved around or if somebody leaves the district. We're able to update that unilaterally rather than having the buildings contact me and then me contact them and then having to wait for that, that lag. So that's the emergency operations plan. If you have any questions as you look through it, it is a big document, and the building documents are not short either.
Just to let everyone know, we, we get this packet usually a week before, so we get to read this. If we have any questions, we can contact Dr. Flay, Dr. Campbell, and this.
It was very detailed.
Yes.
I'd love to take credit.
I inherited most of it too.
Move to approve the updates to the district emergency procedures.
Sir.
Give a motion in the second, I'll give it to Mercy and I. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next we have the blessed routes for 2018, 2019.
Mr. Jokers brought the maps by, I think they're somewhere down here, someone has them, I wonder if some of you. Yeah, so those are the maps of all the routes in the counties, you can see where they travel and what roads. He also, in your board packet, provided a letter with some information and an attachment to that letter that showed that we had three routes that increased in mileage, miles that they're driving to pick up students, and we had two routes decrease, and both of those decreases were for our early childhood special education program, blesses. So unless you have any questions, I would recommend that you approve these routes for the 2018, 19 school year.
I'll move to approve those routes first, if that's anything I think school year's presented.
Second.
Give a motion in the second, I'll give it to Mercy and I. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next we have the instructional program presentation.
Yes, and I'm excited tonight we have the high school music program. So who would like to go first?
You tell me.
It is good. You go ahead.
Okay.
All right.
My name's John Mooney, I'm the instrumental music teacher at St. John High School. Just kind of an overview of, of what we do. I have kind of some different sections of things that I do. Band, we have our band class, which meets first hour. We have, this year, 79 students enrolled in that class, which is a good number for us. The first portion of the year is spent doing marching band activities. Once the football season comes to conclusion, we begin preparing for various concerts and things like that, all the while preparing students for all district auditions and all state auditions and solo and ensemble festivals, as well as we're working already with some students towards college auditions for some things. I have some students that are interested in playing once they go on to college and some being majors once they do that, so that's always a good thing to help them out and to get them prepared for that kind of thing. So, and then the second component of the band part of my day is jazz band, which is a class that meets seventh hour. This is a smaller group, there's 16 students in that class, and we perform traditional jazz, modern jazz, sometimes pop tunes, things like that. That class also functions as the basketball pep band during basketball season. So we play at 10 home varsity games, five boys' games, five girls' games, and, you know, play Star Spangled Banner and Hip to Be Square, Land of the Dance, or you know, whatever the situation calls for, pep band kind of stuff like that. And then we also prepare in the spring that the jazz band goes off to a jazz festival or two and gets to work with college jazz professors and things like that. So kind of the other, I'm excited about this other part. It's, it's still relatively new, and I liked how it's grown, is our guitar program at the high school, and I think a lot of the reason it's grown has to do with the guitar instruction they're getting at the elementary school. So they're, they're getting that bug in fifth grade, and then in the middle school now, they've got some guitar lead groups and things like that, and then they get it to me in high school. And so this year, I have two sections of Guitar I, which is really designed for, for very beginning guitar, and then we're also able to offer Guitar II. So it's a semester class, so if a student is not, for example, a band or choir student, but they're going to need a fine art credit to graduate, they can take a year-long of guitar and get their fine art credit that way, which is really neat, and it's, it's been fun for me, and the kids have really taken off with it, and a lot, there's been a lot of interest in it, so it's, it's a neat part of the, the day. And then the other final component of my day is my Fundamentals of Music class, which is a year-long, what we refer to as general music class, and it's for, you know, it's for any, any student that, I tend to get the ones that need the fine art credits, they have to graduate as well, because that's what it's, I think the class is designed for. And we go through music history from the very beginnings, early times, up until now, and just kind of the basics of how music is written and, and things like that. We're also able to offer occasionally a music theory class, which is really designed for students that are going to be music majors in college, because one of the most difficult classes you take as a freshman music major is those music theory classes. And so being able to get those kids a head start on that has been a big help for, for them, those who have to go on to study music at the college level. Do we have any questions?
I love the part about the guitar, and especially when you said it comes from the grade school.
It helps, you know, the kids are like, oh yeah, I remember doing this with Mr. Kingery back in fifth grade, and it's, it's been good. He, he was doing a program too where he would give a student a guitar, and so I get the kids that, hey, this is the guitar I got from Mr. Kingery, and they're playing it in classes freshman now, so it's.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I am Michelle Jokers, and I teach both homeschool and high school choir, so I only have three high schools. So I only have three high school classes. I have Concert Choir, which is a ninth through twelfth grade auditioned class. So in that class, it's kind of a beginning choir class where I prepare them for chorale, which is the more advanced choir class. Both classes do have the opportunity to participate in all district choir. We will actually be going next week. We prepared students in sight singing and they have to learn a song in Italian. And we go to Hillsborough and we, we're with all the other East Central District schools and we audition and see how many we make. Last year, we had the most ever, which was five. And we actually had our first ever all-state student, Ian Schmidt, which, well, first in over thirty years. So we were pretty excited about that. So we have all-district choir, we have participate all-state choir. We also have our Christmas concert where we have performing a lot of the Christmas Walk festivities around town, particularly the lighting the Christmas tree at the visitors' interactive center, I think is what it's called. It has a couple of names. And then in the past, we've participated with the Muni Band on the Sunday at the St. John Catholic Church. This year, unfortunately, the city moved the performance to the second weekend, and so that's actually our Christmas concert. So we're not going to be able to participate this year because with the pack and everything, there's no other dates. So we're not going to be able to participate for the first time in, this is my sixteenth year teaching. So first time in sixteen years, we won't be able to participate in the performance at the church. So we're a little upset about that, but next year, let's see. In the second semester, we have solo and ensemble that we've participated in and then, of course, our spring concert, which is our pops concert. And, you know, we just try to get our, get our students out in the community to perform for many different events. I also teach show choir. And the show choir, we have our big festival, festival in the springtime. We've kind of alternated back and forth between fall. We've tried to host the performance, well, it's with all of the N-triple-A area schools. We've tried it in the fall, which is usually early October, and we've, we've come to the realization that's just too soon to have it. So we've gone back to February. So we're battling the snow and ice, so hopefully we won't have issues with that this year. So we'll, we'll see how, we'll see how that, that goes. We have a lot of fun in the choir classes and, you know, the students that I have in high school are typically students that I've had since sixth grade and just continue to carry on through the program. And we, I also, we also, I forget to say this, but every other year, we usually do some type of trip. Last year, we went to Disney World and we thank you all for approving those trips, whether it's Gatlinburg, Tennessee, Disney, Chicago, you know, we really like to have those experiences of competing or performing in other states. So we appreciate that.
I think I've talked to you about in the years past, I hate to hear that about the Christmas concert, but the two of you come together and sing and play at the same time in the church in front of the whole community is one of the best times of the year. So thank you for that.
I enjoy it. And I don't know, I didn't vote to change it. I don't know who changed it, but. So the Christmas Walk's the second?
It's the second.
Because the first weekend is the first and second, I think, maybe.
Yeah, it's Saturday because we have that same thing because we always have our.
I don't know if Annette decided that.
I don't know. But they, but they said it's supposed to be the first full weekend, which Saturday and Sunday I would have thought is the first one, but they count Friday.
Either way, it's always spectacular.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Now you guys know why this part is so special to us, the principal reports and hearing from you guys. It's, it's amazing. What a wonderful board, board meeting to hear all this good stuff from all of you.
And you know, you have to do all your performances in a nineteen thirty-four and be amazing.
Right.
Every, every year when other schools and other directors and things come through, they, they walk in and they're just like amazed and blown away.
It's part of the camp. You go out with them and it's one of the, it's part of the camp and our commitment.
And I did forget to mention that we are actually hosting all-district choir here at St. John this year, which is November sixteenth or seventeenth, whatever that Saturday is. So all-district choir will be at St. John.
We're hosting the conference band too this year, I believe.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Martha said it already, but whether it's the facilities and the concert or leader in me or the teacher recognition, there's a lot of positives. So thank you also very much.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the business and that's the assessment plan.
And again, that's Dr. Two.
And again, there's a very strong foundation. We did have one addition, which I'll talk about in just a second. If you turn to the second page, that gives you an overview of what's contained in the document. Guidelines for dealing with students with special needs, guidelines for professional development, test-taking strategies, test security, motivating students to do well. That's all contained in the document. If you'll turn to page six, that starts a list of standardized achievement and ability testing. And if you look at page six, page seven, and page eight, you would think that maybe that's all we do is test students because that's a lot of testing. We did have one addition. That's the NAEP, which is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. That's a congressional mandated test. They contacted us, so we will be giving that. That test is given in fourth, eighth, and twelfth grade. So I know Mr. Graper, I've talked to already, is in the process of coordinating that. For the eighth graders, are we giving it? Did you get contacted about twelfth grade?
I didn't.
Okay, so I believe it's just in eighth grade we'll be giving it this year. That's done for the United States Department of Education. And it's conducted by the National Career for Educational, National Center for Educational Statistics. So that's a new one we had to add to our plate this year. Dr. Flea and I were talking about some of the other testing type things we do, which are more screenings. They added the dyslexia screening this year. There's the scoliosis screening by the PE teachers. As I continue to think about that, I think that might be, this is an assessment plan and those are screenings, so they're distinctly different, but I think that might be a good section to add, maybe next year, just so we have an idea of, an all-encompassing picture of what we're actually screening or testing our kids on. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Happy to see the still the ACT bar all.
Yes, we as a district will continue to provide that because as Mr. Haney surveyed staff last year, they feel very strongly. So that's, that's our plan.
Good.
Move to approve the assessment plan of the testing schedule.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. I'll give my say aye. Opposed? Mr. McDaniel?
I move that the Board of Education holds a closed meeting with a closed record, a closed vote following the regular open meeting on October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen to be held in the R. L. E. Compass Library at seven fifteen, Washington Street, St. John's, Missouri, for the purposes of discussing and voting upon the following items of business. Legal action, cause of action or litigation, lease, purchase, or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbelieving, or promoting protected employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of identifiable individual, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identified individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparation for negotiation with illegal groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specification for competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids with any documents that the bids are open, sealed proposals or related documents to their law proposal are rejected, or any documents related to negotiating contract until the contract is executed, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovations of which the owner has proprietary interest, records relating to municipal outlines established for the report of abuse and wrongdoing, confidential or privileged communication with an auditor, operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property, deportional records that identify security systems or access codes, records identifying what allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption or configuration components or operation of computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network. Credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and personal keys, access codes or authorization codes are used to protect electronic transactions. I further move to notice in this meeting and this attempt to be posted is required by law.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. We'll call Aaron Bosson.
Yes.
Dave Vova.
Yes.
Joan Hook.
Yes.
Terri McGinn, yes.
Yes.
Victor Rudolph.
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven over.
Let's go to a closed session, a closed record, and a closed vote after a short break.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. I'll give my say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?